Regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I extend a warm welcome to those present and to our television viewers. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personal appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I ask that you turn your cellphone to silent alert if you haven't already done so. We appreciate the time you have taken to join us and for your interest in the Waco Independent School District. As part of our board operating procedures, the Waco ISD Board follows 10 guiding commitments that help our focus on students and community. To begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to invite Trustee Guillory and Trustee Abnuisi to each share one of these commitments.
Make sure I didn't miss it, Mr. President. Commitment to continuous improvement. The board will engage in ongoing training, self-evaluation, and reflection on strengthened governance practices.
The board, time, and resource stewardship. Meetings will be conducted efficiently with members coming prepared, respecting time limits, and ensuring prudent use of district resources.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee Guillory and Trustee Abnuisi. Do we have anyone signed up for public comments? No, thank you. We're now moving on to a moment of silence. Now we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Leading our pledge of allegiance this evening are Lake Air Montessori students from the Deaf and Hard of Hearing class, Richard Mills, Lily Wilson, Farrah Foster, Damian Rodriguez, Luis Reyna, and Khalid Arias. Joining them also from Lake Air Montessori are Adeline Allen, Xavieran Allen, Reagan Maldonado, and Kalen Maldonado. Board of trustees, will you join me at the front, please? The Deaf and Hard of Hearing class at Lake Air Montessori taught by Ms. Andrea Dornell is home to some incredible middle school students. Here tonight are Richard Mills, Lily Wilson, Damian Rodriguez, Luis Reyna, and Khalid Lake Air Montessori proudly houses the Regional Day School for the Deaf Program, serving students from across the central Texas area. One of the class's favorite days each month is when Superintendent Dr. Tiffany Spicer visits the students. They light up when she walks through the door. They love showing her what they're learning, teaching her new sign language vocabulary, and sharing plenty of laughter and jokes along the way. They want everyone to know how much they love school, spending time with friends, and simply enjoying being kids. The class also wants to say thank you for the opportunity to shine and represent Waco ISD. Thank you. So joining the Deaf and Hard of Hearing class for the special spotlight are four Lake Air Montessori students, Adeline Allen, Xavieran Allen, Reagan Maldonado, and Kalen Maldonado, who are the proud grandchildren of our amazing principal's secretary, Ms. Darlena Smith. Adeline is a bright first grader, Xavieran a cheerful pre-K4 student, Reagan a sweet living 4th grade student, and Kalen a smart middle school student. They love spending time with their grandma, playing soccer, and being with friends. We are grateful for these students and their families, and I just, I also want to mention, supporting these wonderful students tonight, we want to thank our parents and grandparents who are here as well. Thank you to Maria Lara, Lottie Rodriguez, Jaclyn Wilson, Crystal McDade, Stephanie Rodarte, Richard Mills Jr., and Darlena Smith, and Oscar Ramirez. Thank you.[444.62][444.62](applause) I also want to thank Principal Kristy Yorman for having her students with us tonight. So we are absolutely thrilled and so excited to welcome an incredible member of our Waco ISD family, Wesley Zuniga and his family, joining us tonight. They will be, he will be recognized for monumental achievement. Wesley is a phenomenal 7th grader at Tennyson Middle School, and this past June, he traveled all the way to Seattle, Washington for the prestigious Rubik's WCA World Championship competition.[485.25][485.25](laughter and applause) So I want to mention what started just as a trip to go see the competition turned into a bigger celebration when he like completely crushed it and qualified to be able to compete in the championship. We couldn't be prouder of his amazing accomplishment. So we recently captured a video of his journey, and we want to show you a little clip of that real quick.
Yes, I saw a lot of my icons, people I look up to in cubing, people I think are like really cool.
Oh, can we hear? Turn it up.[525.79][525.79](music) We're almost there. One sec.
Yes, I saw a lot of my icons, people I look up to in cubing, people I think are like really cool. It's kind of like the Olympics for cubing, or like the Oscars for cubing. It's like, oh my god, there's this guy, and this guy, and then another guy. It was absolutely awesome. I felt so lucky.
It was so cool to be able to see you solve that on the video, but what would be even cooler is to see you solve it here. Are you okay with that, Wesley? Okay, so I think Mr. Abnuisi, who's right behind you, is going to scramble the cube for you.[575.91][575.91](laughter) He's to make sure it's legit.[580.54][580.54](laughter) Okay, are you ready? Let's go. That's so incredible. Thank you for sharing your cool talent with us.[635.41][635.41](laughter) That was fun. Okay, thank you, Wesley. Bye, guys. Okay, so next we have our Community Partner Award, just as thrilling, Shepherd's Heart. So we are excited to recognize Shepherd's Heart as our November Community Partner. Waco ISD is incredibly fortunate to have such a powerful and dedicated partnership with Shepherd's Heart. Thank you for your tireless work in supporting the well-being of our students and our families. Your commitment to fighting hunger starts right on our campuses by establishing essential food pantries at Waco High and University High. You ensure our students have food during the day and meals to take home for the evening. Your reach extends directly into our community. We want to thank you for the monthly mobile food pantry distribution at Brook Avenue Elementary, and for operating numerous other mobile food pantries across Waco. You're bringing crucial resources straight into our neighborhoods. In fact, there is an upcoming distribution this Saturday, November 22, at Waco ISD Stadium from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. The impact of Shepherd's Heart work is staggering. Through these mobile distributions alone, Shepherd's Heart is feeding about 7,000 families per month, distributing an incredible 300,000 pounds of food every 30 days, and this level of service is truly life-changing.[724.73][724.73](applause) I also want to mention that as we approach the holidays, we want to recognize your annual Toys from the Heart program. For over 14 years, this initiative has provided much-needed Christmas gifts and assistance to numerous Waco ISD students and families. You're spreading joy during the festive season, and we are deeply grateful for you. Here to accept the Community Partner Award is Bob Gager, Shepherd's Heart CEO, Diane Graham, and Kathy Torres. Thank you for all that you and your team do for Waco ISD and our family.[762.04][762.04](applause) That is all for our recognitions.
The Waco ISD Board of Trustees will now go into closed session at 6:14. This time pursuant of the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Convenient open session at 7:54. 7:54. And we're also going to move to Item 14.
Yes, sir.
Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on the superintendent contract. Is there a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second one, Mr. Bloodsoe, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Abnuisi, is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Mr. Davis, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Guillory, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Patton, is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Mr. Ochoa, is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimous. Okay, so. So now we're going back to.
Uh, thank you.
Right here. Okay, now we're be moving, we're sorry about all this, moving around. We'll be moving back, we'll be moving on to the superintendent report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, trustees. I'd like to share an update that reflects some of the most meaningful work I get to do at superintendent schools here in Waco Independent School District. As often say, student voices are the best voices. In this month, I held my second meeting with our, for the school year, with our middle school and our high school superintendent student advisory committees. This month, students reviewed and discussed instructional calendar options for future school years. Their feedback was thoughtful, honest, and incredibly helpful. I also have to say that as much as they focused on their days off and summer starting, their heart for their teachers and the work that they also, their heart and their passion for their teachers also came through passionately and loudly. Over the course of this year, these student committees allow our students to speak openly about what motivates them academically, what challenges they face, and how we can better support their learning experiences here in our district. Their input plays a direct role in shaping our decisions and the work we lead here in our district. Meeting with these student groups not only informs our work, but it keeps us grounded in what truly matters, ensuring that student voice continues to guide the direction of Waco Independent School District. All right, so Thanksgiving in Waco ISD. As we head into Thanksgiving, I want to take a moment to say how truly grateful I am for our students, our staff, and our community. Every day, I'm reminded that the strength of this district comes from the people who pour their hearts into our schools. This year, I especially want to celebrate our incredible Child Nutrition Service team. Over the past few weeks, they've hosted 20 special Thanksgiving meals for families across the district, serving over 8,000 meals, and they did it with impressive amounts of holiday spirit and ingredients. 1,483 pounds of turkey, 536 pounds of stuffing, 326 pounds of mashed potatoes, 945 pounds of cranberry sauce, 2,220 pounds of carrots, my lord, 488 pounds of pudding, and 50 pounds of whipped topping. But beyond the numbers, what really matters is the experience they created. Families sitting together, sharing a meal, we had coloring, we had drawing, and just conversations, and feeling connected to their schools. That sense of community is what makes Waco ISD so special, and I'm incredibly thankful for the team that made it happen. So as we head into the Thanksgiving holiday break, I want to remind all of us, our principals, our teachers, custodians, everybody who has a hand in Waco ISD, to take time to do a few things. Take time to rest, refresh, and reset. Take the time to love on your families. This is your time to receive love and gratitude from them, as well as to give it to those that you treasure. I am so thankful for each and every one of you. I hope everyone in our Waco ISD family and community has a wonderful and restful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Dr. Spicer, I'd also like to thank a lot of the churches around the community. They helped out at a lot of the schools.
Yes, sir.
So thank them, and I mean, just the community for helping us out.
Absolutely.
All right. We will now move on to Item 6, Information Reports, information items and reports. Trustee Bloodsoe, do you have any questions?
No.
Trustee Abnuisi, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Trustee Guillory, do you have any questions?
No.
Trustee Patton, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Trustee Ochoa, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Item Number 7, Consent Agenda. Mr. Bloodsoe, is there anything you like pulled?
No.
Mr. Abnuisi, is there anything like pulled?
No, sir.
Mr. Guillory, is there anything you like pulled?
I'll abstain from 7G, pass that on to you. 7, yes, 7F.
Mr. Patton, is there anything you like pulled?
No.
Mr. Ochoa, is there anything like pulled?
No.
At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mr. Guillory abstaining from 7F. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Second. Mr. Bloodsoe, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Abnuisi, is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Mr. Guillory, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Patton, is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Mr. Ochoa, is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes with Mr. Guillory abstaining. All right, at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the 7F.
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We're moving on to Item 8. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action extending, expanding partnership with Waco Family Medicine to include behavioral health services presented by Dr. Spicer and Dr. Jackson Griggs.
All right, thank you, Mr. President and trustees. My name is Tiffany Spicer.[1274.41][1274.41](laughter) I have the privilege and honor to protect my friend and colleague here from Waco Independent Medicine, Dr. Griggs. All right, so what you may or may not know, we have a great partnership with Waco Independent Medicine. And so when I got here a year ago, everybody says, what can I do, what can I do, what can I do? And I'm like, hey. Oh, thank you. Everybody says, what can I do, what can I do? And for me, it's like, yes, we want your partnership, but give us a few minutes, let us kind of get a bearing of where we are as a system. And I don't want to always just say yes because you end up taking on things that you may not need. But we circled back around, and I was like, hey, I got a favor for you. We have a partnership with them already, and so we had dental services, but we want to expand those dental services. I was like, I know our kiddos, they get their vision checked, you know, we get classes. And I'll share a quick story. I got to do a ride-along last spring, and I'm on the bus, and I'm sitting with a young lady, South Wake Elementary, where you at? Yes, baby.[1346.23][1346.23](laughter) And so I'm sitting with a young lady, and I'm like, hey, what's that? And she goes, I'm getting glasses. I said, oh. And so she was kind of sassy with me, and she was kind of tired and kind of cranky. She says, Ms., do you have food? And I said, no, ma'am, I don't, I'm so sorry, I would have got you some. So she's holding that paper really, really tight, and some other kids are getting off the bus while her paper falls through the, underneath the little headboard, and it falls into the street. Another student gets the paper, and she's panicking. And so the kiddo gets the paper, and he gives it back to her, and she was just like holding it to her chest, 2nd grader. She was so proud that she was getting glasses. And that was one of the moments where I'm like, this is why we need these partnerships, like Dr. Griggs and Waco Family Medicine. And so we have the opportunity for them to also come alongside of us. We did have a partnership with Transformation Waco for our Vision Center. That is expiring. But I said, hey, phone a friend, do you mind taking this partnership with us to the next level? And he said, yes. And so we're excited about the opportunity to do that as well with them as well. And so next, we have another opportunity coming forward, and he's going to dig more into the weeds. But one of the things we talked about was just mental health needs of our students. And a lot of times, you have, I'll say, behaviors or experiences that you may not see or may not understand what's going on in the background. And sometimes there's mental health needs, sometimes there's social, emotional learning needs. And so again, I said, hey, would you be willing to kind of look at having social workers in our schools to help us? And he said, yes. And so right now, we have the opportunity to bring three social workers to our middle schools, one for each school. Do I want 10? Absolutely. But can we do it right now? Not yet, right? But this is our attempt to partner to help our students and do some preventative work for our students, but also do some maintenance work for our students. We have several different kinds of partnerships throughout our school system, but we believe this will be a better extension to help the work that we're already doing. And so I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Griggs to kind of talk about that work.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. And I'm going to start with just a word of gratitude. You all give so much of your time to this, and there may not be anything more important in our community than, than high-quality education for those in need. So thank you. Thank you for the volunteer time, thank you for the sacrifice that you make as board members. I want to kind of set the stage by telling you a little bit about the condition of mental health among children and adolescents in the country. So in 2021, the two most authoritative voices in pediatric and adolescent mental health in the country, that's the American Academy of Pediatrics and the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, declared a national mental health emergency for children. It's not been rescinded. So nationally, we have seen a growth in the prevalence of mental health conditions, really starting around 2010. The growth of prevalence among mental health conditions among children and adolescents has climbed aggressively. There is, the CDC reports more depression, suicidality, and untreated mental health needs among children and adolescents than ever before. And that's, again, that's the national landscape. And in Texas, Texas ranks 50th out of 50 states in terms of mental health professional access. So we are at the bottom of all the states in terms of the community's access to mental health professionals in a country that's a crisis, and we're the worst state in terms of access to mental health professionals. And McLennan County reports a pediatric adolescent hospitalization rate, mental health hospitalization rate, 29% higher than the state. So nation, Texas is worse in terms of mental health access compared to the country, and then McLennan County has a higher rate of mental health hospitalization among children and adolescents. We see that in our clinic, we see more and more children and adolescents struggling with mental health needs. And, and of course, among our patients, we see transportation barriers, challenges with families taking off work in order to bring their children in. We see access issues, you know, the wait time on the phone sometimes can be a barrier. And so when Dr. Spicer and I began to envision access for children to mental health, we were really excited about the, the opportunity. And, and so when we envision the work, we are not wanting to duplicate any existing efforts that are in the school system. School counselors do magnificent work already, academic, career, personal, social support. As primary care, you know, we know how to, we know swim lanes, and we know collaboration because we're doing that in the healthcare ecosystem all the time. We would envision being deeply collaborative, ensuring that we're not stepping on toes or duplicating efforts. But what our focus is, is on diagnosable mental health conditions. So there are internalizing, externalizing behaviors among kids that, that teachers, school counselors are sensitive to, they recognize, administrators recognize, that kid who used to be engaged and paying attention now begins to be quiet, maybe, maybe sleeping, maybe grades fall off, just seems internally distracted. So that's a red flag, right? Parents may not recognize that as a red flag. They may be dealing with other family issues, stressors, they may feel really guilty or ashamed about the child's behavior, and won't recognize that necessarily as an indicator of a potential mental health problem. Externalizing behaviors, kid was, you know, was a kiddo who really was engaged and more or less kind of followed teacher instructions, then becomes really irritable and may act out. That may be an indicator of something that's, that's an emerging mental health condition. So by situating professionals in schools, clinicians within schools, we have the capacity to, once those kids who are at risk are identified and brought to our mental health clinic, assess, is this a diagnosable mental health condition, develop a plan of care, and intervene appropriately. Frequently, that will be with psychotherapy, so counseling what is done in a, with a clinical social worker, an LPC. Occasionally, a child might need medication support, and at least for the time being, we would envision just that child scheduling an appointment at our, at our clinic. But we hope in the future to develop a telehealth opportunity as well, so that we can couple clinical social work or licensed professional counselor with telehealth in the, in the school, so that we can work with the clinician right then and there. Of course, consenting every one of these children with family before there's any intervention is all, at all, is imperative. Of course, consenting every one of these children with family before there's any intervention is all at all is imperative. And and we'll be figuring out all the workflows very collaboratively with the with Dr. Spicer and the principals and other administrators as we go forward. Let's see, maybe the next slide. I think I've covered everything there. So why why does this matter for school outcomes? When children who have diagnosable mental health conditions get the treatment that they need, their school performance improves. Their their grades improve, their scoring on standardized tests improve. They miss fewer days because they're less distressed from a mental emotional health standpoint. So they they miss fewer days. They have more goal-directed behaviors, they're better time management. And and ultimately, there are fewer dropouts as well. Fewer, more kids complete graduation once their mental health conditions are addressed. So so while, you know, as a as a as a family doctor, I'm thinking about the the internal distress and the and the family that's struggling with this mental health condition that's appearing in the child. But but I think also from an academic standpoint and a school functioning standpoint, I think there's a lot of promise in this. And so we're just so honored to be collaborators with Waco ISD. Tremendous admiration for Dr. Spicer, the principals, and and of course, the board and the work that you do. So so thank you for the opportunity to be a partner with you in addressing this need that is that's national, but we're we're certainly feeling it locally.
Thank you, Dr. Spicer and Dr. Griggs. Is there a motion?
Just have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Ochoa.
I just, I want to just say thank you, Dr. Spicer. This is something we've we've talked about for a long time. I know in a lot of cases, our teachers have to be not just teachers anymore, but they have to be mentors, they have to be parents, they have to be counselors, they have to be lots of things. And so something like this is just incredible. And so thank you for the work that you do and and Waco Family Medicine does. And not just the doctors, but I would encourage everyone who hasn't seen all the work that they do there to call Alfred Solano or Doug McDermott and have him show you all the incredible things that they're doing over there with their pharmacy, with their cooking classes, with their medical legal partnership with Waco, great Waco Legal Services. It's incredible and we're very excited to be partnering with you.
Just.
That was a great plug for Alfred. No, but same thing, man. If you get an opportunity to tour that beautiful facility that y'all have, I had an opportunity to go through there and I saw like, I didn't know y'all did dental work there at your at your space and and also the mental health services and all the different services you offer in there and all the things you do for the community. And and just knowing you personally, man, I appreciate everything you do and what y'all do for the community.
Mr. Abnousi?
Just want to say this, I'm echoing everything you're saying here. First of all, I want to say I'm meeting a celebrity. I remember all the, and I tell you why, right? The years of COVID, you on TV giving us those reports. I finally meet you in person, what an honor. Thank you for, no, seriously, that's amazing. And then another thing is, as an advocate of for mental health myself, I'm a, of course, I would like to champion it as much as I can for myself, for the students, for teachers, principals, everyone, all the staff. I'm so grateful, but at the same time, I'm actually even more grateful to you, Dr. Spicer, for thinking about this, initiating this 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 movement, which I think is super, super necessary in these times. But thank you for both of you for that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll just ditto everything that everyone said. Jackson, I'm such a huge fan of yours. Waco Family Medicine is so critical to our community. And I hope everybody knows that what a jewel that that we have in you guys. And so thank you for all that you do, just for everyone in our community and thank you for this partnership.
Mr. Patton?
Everyone said everything. We do want to say thank you for the support and partnership that you're bringing to our students. And as Dr. Spicer always says, it takes a village. And this is going to be an important support and help for our kids in middle school. Age is when you start seeing so many behaviors, stressors. And so I think this is a perfect way to help, hopefully, help these kids that that are starting to exhibit behaviors. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Ochoa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Patton. Mr. Bledsoe, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Abnousi, is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Mr. Guillory, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Patton, is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Mr. Ochoa, is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank y'all. And we're moving on to item number nine, review and discuss priority three dash three point one, increased parent and family engagement presented by Jill Anderson.
Good evening, President Vedania, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Spicer. I have the privilege of talking about increasing parent and family engagement. So excited to go over that tonight with you. Priority three, community and three point one. I just want to mention as we get into this that as part of the leadership team, I get to report on this, which is a lot of fun. But I want to mention that the people who do this work every day, they're incredible. I want to recognize them and their boots on the ground and they're embedded in our campuses and doing this tough work. So I appreciate them. Am I clicking? Okay. We missed it. Okay. So these are some of the faces that you guys have probably seen on campus that pull all these things together. They're not everybody, but I mean, they're incredible. So I just want to give them a shout out. So three point one point one, we want to establish and strengthen parent-teacher organizations across the district. So our goal in the strategic plan is to have 100% formal parent engagement groups by 2030. I'm really excited to report that just in the first three months that we've made a strategic effort to build these groups on campus, we already have 14 who are reporting the parent engagement groups. And so we're really close to having that 100% already. We've put a concerted effort to grow relationships with parents. And I want to share some of the successes that we've had so far this year. So you can see some of the pictures up there. At University High School, we had our first Fiesta event, which was incredible and grew to be a huge success. And the parent group there had organized that. We also have listed on there our Parkdale volunteer, Adrian Muske, as you guys know him. We honored him with the Community Partner Award in September for being an incredible volunteer with Parkdale. He also won the Heroes for Children Award from the State Board of Education as well in September. And then also to mention that Parkdale had an incredible parent-led carnival in October. I also want to say as an amazing success is that Waco High has empowering empowering parent meetings once a month. And so that's unusual for a high school to have that kind of involvement. So it's really cool to be able to speak on that. And parents are able to talk to counselors, administrative staff, instructional specialists at least once a month. So their most recent event, they had Zumba. And then the chef there taught parents how to make healthy, quick, and easy meals. So that's a fun success to talk about. So three point one point two, we're creating opportunities for parent voice. So I want to mention that Dr. Spicer, when she came on, she met with parents from every single campus across the school district. That was really important to be able to hear their voices and what they need. And we'll continue to solicit parent voice moving forward. Another way that we're measuring this is through Parent Square, which has been fantastic. So I'm super excited to report on this platform. We have 99.2% contactability with our families in Waco ISD. So if you see in the hot pink there, the 98% is the benchmark that Parent Square reports nationwide is like excellent. So we're doing really well there. And then another piece that I'm really excited to report on is 48% parent interaction. And so that is basically what it what it says, is that parents are responding and interacting with us on the platform. And 36% is the nationwide benchmark for that. And then three point one point three, we want to create opportunities for parent engagement events designed to inform and support. So the measure that we're using for this is our climate surveys that are given to inform action steps. Our goal by 2030 is to have 88 to 95% satisfaction rating for safety and engagement. And the baseline that we're using right now is from a survey that we gave in May of 2025. And so we're starting at 74%. With that data, it's not enough to create actionable steps to move forward. And so we are, we sent another survey out October of 2025. And then we're going to be sending another one out in May of next year. So we'll have more data to go on for that. Oops, I think I went too far. So with this, I just want to share some of the things that we're already doing. This is really a year to capture all of the different events that we're doing and quantify them. And so I want to mention the STEAM and STEM nights that we're doing. You can see up there, the superintendent fun run, which was so well attended. We actually had to shut down registration kind of at the end because we were getting overwhelmed with it. So that's amazing. We're going to have that again. We did the family fest. We have the Thanksgiving meals that you guys have probably heard about and been involved in. And so we're doing really well. We're moving in a positive direction. But as we get more opportunity for parent voice, we'll be able to strategically add to those events. That is all that I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Just a quick comment because I saw their pictures on here. Keely Jackson at at Waco High and Mary Olivata is at University High School. They have closed closets there for students. This weekend, my wife made me clean out half my closet. Those got taken over there, but they they always need stuff. The women's empowerment, some of the men's empowerment, some are coming up. And high school kids come in all shapes and sizes. So if you happen to to need to clean out your closet or anything like that, they'll be happy to come pick them up or someone can drop them off for you.
It's a great note. Thank you. I actually have a box that was delivered by a reporter who moved from the Waco area and she donated a whole box of brand new clothes for students. So I'm excited to deliver those.
And Mr. Guillory?
No.
Mr. Abnousi?
We just thank you for everything you do.
And I'm very excited to see Jim Patton running the superintendent fun run next year.
He's doing it. We're doing it.
Miss, I just had a comment. I know the PTAs, I would like to, I guess, educate parents more on what they're getting into because I know some of the PTAs, there's a lot into it more than what people realize. And some of them just jump in without actually knowing the laws and the requirements. And if we could, the ones that are want to start it, kind of educate them on what they need to do first and what goes into it before they just jump in headfirst. And then, you know, kind of start falling under the water there.
Yes, sir. And I will add to that. I do happen to know the state rep for our PTA across Texas. And so they sent a representative and I did have the chance to meet with them. And so we did talk about that because there's federal government documents that you have to complete. And there's all these checks and balances. So we are working to make sure that all of our district knows what to do and how to do it. Just but also to make sure that we get everything done right, but also make sure that we have it happening so these kiddos and our families have opportunities. Because there's also scholarships and different things that come from that as well. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
We're moving on to, we're moving on to item 10, discuss and take appropriate action. Renaming the Waco High Athletics Weight Room presented by Coach Ed Love.
Good evening.
Good evening, Coach.
President Vedania, members of the board, Dr. Spicer. Thank you, guys, for this opportunity. I get some of the stuff on my way, I'll be ready to go. So I'm here tonight requesting your approval to name the new Waco High School Weight Room after Andrew Billings. Okay? Now, there's a long list of accomplishments, so I will only highlight some of them. I'm sure you have that information in front of you. So I'll just highlight a few for the sake of time, okay? So of course, he's one of ours. He attended Alta Vista in elementary. He attended Carver Middle School and of course, he graduated from Waco High School. While he was at Waco High School, he participated in three sports. He was, of course, you know, he was a power lifter, a football player, and he also was track and field as well. In powerlifting, pay attention to this. This is amazing. Of course, he won state two times in a row, two years in a row, 2012 and 2013, in the super heavyweight division. And in 2013, he was the one, he broke the Texas State High School record for most combined weight ever lifted, 2,010 pounds. So think about just this for a second, okay? 2,010 pounds. So he actually squatted a little over 800. He benched over 500 and he deadlifted over 700. That's a lot of weight. That's being able to hold a car and let someone change the flat and then put it back down, okay? When he broke that record, the record had been there over 20 years. And it was previously held by the Olympian, Mark Henry. And Mark Henry was one that was noted for being one of the strongest men in the world. So of course, Andrew decided to go play football. He wasn't interested in going and being a power lifter or going to the Olympics. So anyway, he played at Baylor, won all kind of awards there. First team All-Big 12, first team All-American, Big 12 Defensive lineman of the Year, Defensive Player of the Year, just just amazing. He also transitioned into into professional football. Of course, he was drafted by the Cincinnati Bengals. He played there for a couple of years, two or three years. Picked up by the by the Raiders and now he plays for Chicago Bears. Another interesting thing about him, he was selected as a Chicago Bears nominee for the Walter Payton Award. And that's real special to for, of course, he nearly got a lot of teammates. But for him to be chosen to be their their representative for such a prestigious award as Walter Payton, that says a whole lot about the young man. Some other recognitions and quotes. Cleveland Brown coach Lane Kiffin said, quoted, that he's the strongest guy I've ever seen. Former Baylor head football coach Art Brows said that he was the strongest high school football player in the nation. NFL.com, the strongest player in college football. Men's Health Magazine, 2023, 24, and 25 NFL All-Strong Team. The Barbell Magazine lists him, get this, as one of the top 10 strongest NFL players ever. Ever. Want to show a quick video? This is at the state meet.
Baylor football in 2013, head coach Art Brows.
That's over 800 pounds right there, guys.
In the country.
March 23rd of 2013, Andrew Billings from Waco High set the highest total record of anybody.
700, 705 pounds. That's a lot of weight. That is a lot of weight. And I don't know if you've ever been to one of those powerlifting meets, but whenever someone is getting ready to try a record, they always stop all of the other platforms and everybody pay attention to that. So that whole stadium was watching him at that particular time. Okay, so for someone who was the strongest man in high school, the strongest man in college, and also the strongest man in the NFL, he has never forgotten to give back to the community, okay? I know you have a long list of that as well. I just want to highlight a few. Through the partnership with Waco ISD, we have an annual Andrew Billings Powerlifting Meet. We have an annual youth football camp, a free camp. We open that up on like on the mornings around nine or 10 o'clock. It's full, it's filled by the end of the day. Over 300 kids, free camp. A program called Bikes and Books. That is amazing. He started that in 2022. And I've gone to a few of those. Those kids are so excited. The campuses are so excited, the teachers and everybody. It's a, it's a really nice event. We do it this year. He does it every year. So if you ever get a chance to go and check that out, it's really something special to look at. His programs have also provided more than 1,000 books for WISD Elementary School students. Last year, he started a new program for the teachers in WISD, okay? He called it Huddle Up for Teachers. Huddle Up for Teachers. Isn't that cool? Classroom mini grants. Four of our elementary schools right now are participating in that. He gives 10 teachers per campus amount of money to just buy school supplies. Awesome. Few other things he's done so far. He's also, he supports the American Lung Association, the Professional Male Mentor Association. That's our group, our mentor group. I'm very proud of that group. I'm gonna do that for the rest of my life. Waco ISD Men's Empowerment Summit, Waco ISD Adopt a School Program, awarded twenty twenty-three outstanding foundation by the Association of Fundraising Professionals Central Texas Chapter. Okay? I want to show you another video real quick about a lot of things he's been doing in Waco ISD. Second video.
It's very special being here and, you know, receiving this award. It means a lot. My heart dropped when I had to give that speech though, but it was all good. Everybody's giving me congratulations and stuff. That's nice. When I got drafted, seeing the guys that they're in the locker room, what they did, like, told me that, hey, I can, I can do something too. And I can take it to my community. When I was in school, there was a little bike giveaway. And like, it was just always a big deal. Everybody wanted to know who's getting the bike. So it was just something I wanted to bring back and kind of spread it around for just attendance. The foundation itself really brought the community together. A lot of people came in and pitched in to help. Every year, there's new kids coming in there. You see smiles on their faces. Parents are happy and the school's happy and kids are going to school. There's nothing better than that. Everybody from teachers to principals to the daycare, coaches, especially coaches. Those people really helped me get to where I'm at. My dad was a big mentor, so it helps you not make the wrong turns in life. And if you do, it helps you get out of it sometimes and just look back and realize what you did. And you know, a lot of kids don't have that. So just being there and, you know, being there for those kids is pretty big for me. You know, there's gonna be highs, lows. Just gotta keep pushing, keep striving.
All right, that's amazing, isn't it? So we understand that, you know, he's practicing. They have a big game this weekend against Pittsburgh. And right now, the Bears are in first place. And so we do have a few of his family members here. His uncle and his nephew, the guy called in the rain coming from Dallas, so they had to turn around and go back. But we do have his aunt, Vivian Mitchell. If you could come up here next to me, please. She's here. We have a representative from the Southern Football Program that Billings sponsored also, Coach Gamble. Come on up, Coach. We have his high school coach here, Coach Herbst, Marty Herbst. Glad I looked over that way, Rodney Clark. I didn't know you'd made it. I'm glad you made it. Rodney Clark, come on up, Rodney. He's one of the, one of his friends and a foundation supporter. Also, I like to brag on the fact that I was Rodney Clark's position coach when he played football at Waco High. He was a running back and a real good one. And last but not least, we have Lisa Saxinian. She was the principal at Waco High during that time. Come on up, Lisa. Don't wave at us. Come on up. So I want to thank you guys for coming. And I know that we've been sitting here for a while, but Andrew Billings is worth it. So at this time, I want to say again, thank you so much and appreciate your consideration. And at this time, we'll accept any questions at this time.
I have a question. I was just coming. He's not here, but I know Mr. Billings, Andrew Billings' dad, and the work that he does in Waco with Workforce. And we do the YES Expo every year and him heading all those things up and the work that his family does. He comes from a good family. Coach Herbst, Campbell, you know, everybody up here. We said probably three times tonight, it takes a village. And the type of man that he is is just really reflective of the community that he was part of. And, you know, just thank each and every one of you. I know the work that y'all are doing with Southern Panthers, Coach Herbst coached my son for a little bit. And, you know, wonderful coach, wonderful man, and the things that you've done for our students in the district didn't go unnoticed. Really appreciate you picking them up and in your own vehicle, getting them home and all those different things. So thank you for that. And Ms. Saxinian and everything you've done over at Waco High School, you have my kids as well. And the things that you've done for all the students that came through Waco High School. So this is, this is all of you, but also Mr. Billings. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yeah, this will probably be the easiest decision this board's ever had to make. I, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Billings, Andrew Billings. I'm sure he's at home watching us on YouTube right now. I mean, I can't think of anything else he'd rather be doing. But we, I love to watch him play at Waco High. I love to watch him play at Baylor. My son, when he's watching hype videos before his football games, he's, he's watching Ray Lewis and Andrew Billings. The only critique I think I have is, I think he probably could have squeezed a couple of two and halves on the side of that seven hundred pound deadlift. Looked like he got it pretty easy. But if you've never experienced the joy that those kids, that he brings to those kids when he hands out those bikes, I mean, it's just an absolutely incredible experience. So I want to thank everyone he knows, everyone that, that's poured into his life for making him the man he is. We, I mean, he's a product of Waco. We're very proud to call him that.
Mr. Abnisi?
I didn't know the connection there. You should have told me something, Ms. Vivian. I mean, how could you not? We work together. And now I figure out there's a connection. I saw, the first time I came across the image of Andrew Billings was in the, the library of J. H. Hines. And stories that I heard about him and things that he does. I look at it, I just wrote, really, I can't find or see any, a more deserving individual for this honor. Not for our school, but also for our city. And the amount of positive that he brings to our, the grassroots that I, I, it's so dear to my heart. And he just exemplifies that. But thank you for that. All of you for, for being a part of that life that we are now enjoying. Appreciate it.
Mr. Bledsoe?
I feel like I'm back in high school. I've got Coach Love and Coach Herbst and Ms. Sax. No, but as a, as a, as a Waco High Lion and a Baylor Bear, I'm so proud of Andrew Billings. And more proud of the man that he's become than I am the athlete and all the athletic accolades and the weightlifting. That's awesome. But man, like, the way he gives back and pours back into the community where he came from is, is just so, so impressive. Rodney, thank you for all that you do. And so just, I agree with Angelo. I think the easiest decision the board will ever make. And I want to know if Jim Patton could do seven twenty.
No, but we do appreciate this, his impact that he's making in Waco ISD, but in our community as a whole. The philanthropic part of this incredible man is outstanding. So we're very thankful for his involvement, his foundation's involvement. It's really very much appreciated.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I just want to thank Coach Love. I don't think there's needed a presentation. But I think mine is, I just want to make sure we do put an Andrew Billings, I guess, where you can see it from down the hall. And I, I don't want to walk into the school and see a little plaque.
I want to make sure. It's gonna be big like him.
Yeah, all right. That's, 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 as long as we can do that, yeah.
It has to get approved by Rodney though.
That plaque needs to weigh two thousand and ten pounds.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Coach Love. And thank you, everybody, for being here and waiting for us. Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Mr., is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bledsoe, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Abnisi, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Giller, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Patton, is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Mr. Ochoa, is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That'll be horrible.
Well, now we move on to item eleven, announcement by Elizabeth Cox.
Coach Spicer, I have a few things first. I didn't hear Coach Love say it, but I, I want to make sure. And I'm not sure if he'll be with us here in December. This might also be Coach Love's last board meeting with us in this role. I, I do think we'll call him back, but I am really glad he, he waited until this last board meeting to do a presentation for me. And Coach Love, we don't yet have a date on when we will dedicate the Weight Room because we're gonna give Mr. Billings the chance to play out his season and then look to schedule it in the spring. So stay tuned. But he won't be going far, so we'll keep it back around.
Coach, you have been, I, I want to take a moment. You have been so important to our district. You've been such a good friend to me. And I have appreciated our relationship. And I have mixed feelings about you retiring and really don't like that idea. But I, I just want to say how much I appreciate you, your leadership, and the example that you have set for Waco ISD.
Can I, can I just echo that? Coach, man, I think you're the last person I can say, like, I, maybe other than Lisa Saxinian. I don't know Waco ISD without you. Like, I mean, as long as I can remember Waco ISD, Ed Love has been a part of it. And you're just such a fabric of this school district. I remember you as a baseball coach, as a football coach, as a principal, as an athletic director. And you've left just such an indelible mark on this school district. And just so, so grateful for the way that you've impacted the lives of so, so many kids. So thank you.
I really don't want to say anything, but, because this, this is, this is hard for me. I brought my kids to you. You know, I had them in a, in another district. And I remember talking to you and talking to Saxinian and said, man, I'm thinking about bringing my, my babies over to you. He said, bring them. And, you know, now one of them's in law school and the other one's heading into the police, police force. And, man, that's all, that's, that's, that's the community. That's you, that's Ms. Saxinian, that's all the counselors and teachers that, that they had. And, and I, I tease you about putting a statue up over at the stadium of you, but I'm really pushed for that. But no, we really do appreciate everything that you've done, appreciate the man that you are. You've been a mentor to me, someone I looked up to and still look up to in this community. And part of even who I am in the community is, is due to the man that you are. So, yeah.
We'll have more of a chance to maybe roast Coach Love a little bit, too. I know we've got some stories. I know Lisa will help with that. On December tenth, there'll be a retirement reception at athletics from four to six P. M. So be on the lookout for more information. Okay, tomorrow, Friday, November twenty-one, is a student holiday and staff workday. As we send our Waco ISD students and staff off for a much deserved Thanksgiving break, the district will be closed November twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth with classes resuming on Monday, December one. It's that close, y'all. December is here. Before we get our fill of turkey this Saturday, we need to bring the Waco ISD and Trojan Pride to Belton as our university high school football team takes on Bassdrop in the second round of the playoffs. This area round matchup kicks off at two P. M. at U M H B East Crusader Stadium. I want to tell Coach Foster and the whole team, best of luck. We will be there with our purple on, cheering them on in a stadium already in purple, so it's gonna be great. It's gonna be a great Saturday. So I hope to see everybody there. At each of your places tonight, you have the communications team annual list of holiday programs, or as I like to call it, the Jose Vedanya Challenge. Who can, who can attend as many events as Mr. Vedanya will?
He's all like, I already got it planned out, mapped out.
This copy of the special holiday programs planned by our amazing fine arts and campus teams is to help guide you to take in all the amazing sights and sounds of the holidays, beginning Thursday, December fourth, and running through Thursday, December eighteenth, where you'll be here with us. Sorry. The sights and sounds will be ringing throughout the district. I hope you can make it out to all of these events to celebrate the talents and dedication of our students and staff. And again, try to beat Mr. Vedanya and how many you can attend. Our next regular board meeting will be Thursday, December eighteenth. And before we conclude tonight, we have another very special honor. I'd like to take a moment to recognize someone whose service to Waco ISD has been nothing short of extraordinary. For more than four decades, Pete Rusick, Peter K. Rusick, has stood by this board and this district, providing wise counsel, steady guidance, and unwavering commitment to doing what's right for our students and community. I wonder if any of his teachers at Richfield would have ever thought that someone would be standing before the Waco ISD Board saying that about this young man. His work has shaped policies, supported superintendents and trustees through countless challenges, and ensured that Waco ISD has always navigated complex issues with legal precision when his wise counsel is sought. What has always set him apart is not just his deep knowledge of the law, but his calm presence, his thoughtful judgment, and his incredible sense of humor and ability to tell a really great story, sometimes not so appropriate. He has been a trusted advisor, a problem solver, and for many of us, a mentor and a friend. Tonight, as he steps away from private practice to answer a new calling as a district court judge, we want to honor the legacy he leaves here in Waco ISD. This new role is not only a testament to his professional expertise, but also to the character and commitment we've witnessed for decades. On behalf of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees, our staff, and our students, we say thank you for your guidance, your dedication, the countless hours you've poured into supporting this district. And we get to be your last school board meeting. Midway already had theirs. His last one's with us, y'all. We are grateful for your service and we are proud to see you continue serving our community in such an important way. We know we're gonna already have the back row of your courtroom filled with a lot of us on those first days. Congratulations and know you will always be a part of the Waco ISD family. And those flowers are for Robbie. We're helping you out.
Absolutely.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.